Commission. All right. Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the Planning Commission for October 25th, 2022. Yeah, in room 241 of the County Office Bill. Opportunities for the public to access and participate in hybrid meeting are posted on the Admiral County website. On the planning commission homepage and on the Admiral County calendar. Participation will include the opportunity to comment on those matters, which comments from the public will be received. We have the call. Is Carolyn on? Can we have the call to order?
Yes, I am.
I meant the roll call, sorry.
Yes, are you ready?
Yes ma'am.
Mister. Clayburn.
Absent.
Miss more, Mister Vivins.
Yeah.
Mister Karazana.
Here.
Miss Firehawk.
Here.
Mister Missile.
Here.
And Mister Murray.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. We have established a quora. Right, we're not taking any matters from the public at this time for this session. Can we have a report from staff Cameron and Jill about this work session?
Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Today, we're here for a work session on a potential zoning map amendment application. And some questions that staff and the applicant have for commission about some of the comprehensive plan recommendations. So to begin, this is the property in question. It's tax map parcel sixty-one W dash O two dash zero A two. It is three point two two seven acres and it is located on the east side of Route twenty-nine. It is currently zoned C one commercial and it is located on the boundary between Admiral County and the city of Charlottesville. I'm sure most of you are familiar with this area, but as you can tell, there's a wide range of uses that surround this parcel. Most of them are non-residential. There are some retirement and assisted living facility homes to the northeast. But this parcel is actually the former site of the Seaville Oriental Grocery Store. And at the rear of the property is an existing business that does some automobile service work. So the property is located within the Places twenty-nine development area. And this is the future land use classifications that are recommended by the plan on the property. You'll notice the letters NS. That stands for Neighborhood Service Center. Basically, this is one of the center types in the Places twenty-nine master plan that is meant to recognize areas of activity or nodes of activity that would occur within this development area. Neighborhood Service Center is the least intense center type recommended by the master plan. But for purposes of the discussion today, one thing I wanted to call out specifically is that the master plan recommends a maximum building height of three stories for any structures that are in a neighborhood service center. So you'll notice there's two other colors within the property. One of those is orange and that represents the urban density residential future land use classification. That allows for basically any type of residential use at a density between six and thirty-four units per acre. It also has a maximum three-story building height. And I'm just going to go ahead and say that may be an error. I think it's actually a maximum four-story building height within urban density residential. I apologize for that. The last color that we see is the pink and white hatching, which covers most of the parcel here. And that represents the urban mixed use in centers land use category. So that is what it sounds like. It's a mixed use land use classification that could include commercial, retail, general, non-residential, like office or institutional. But it also does allow residential uses at densities between three and twenty units per acre. So this is one of the images from attachment A, which was included with the staff report. And what it is meant to show is the general development that could be done on this parcel with this proposal. So again, this would be a zoning map amendment to change the zoning district of the property from C one commercial to the neighborhood model district. Which neighborhood model district is a mixed-use district that allows for non-residential and residential uses. The actual form of this development would be a single structure. That would be primarily multifamily residential dwellings. It's two hundred and seventy-five units is what this developer is looking to do. They would have an interior structured parking lot, which is represented on this image sort of center left. You can see parking. It's a gray color. There is a residential or retail component that they would be looking to do, and that is the salmon or pinkish color you see on the left-hand side of the screen. I think that's seventy-four hundred square feet was what was included in the write-up provided by the applicant. The building would be five stories tall. And so really, the last thing to say about this is looking at the average of the parcel and then the number of dwelling units proposed. That comes out to eighty-five dwelling units per acre, which exceeds the twenty units per acre recommended in the urban mixed-use category and the thirty-four units per acre recommended in the urban density residential. I have some slides here. The applicant is also available to go through these images and talk about the specifics and the layout and the purposes of the floor plans, but they do have images that represent each level of the structure in the staff report. This is the first floor. This is the second level. And this would be levels three through five. There are some facade renderings to sort of convey what the form of this building would look like from the roadway. The street that you see down here is actually Route twenty-nine. And then this is Hillsdale Drive back here. So this is looking from the northwest to the southeast. This is basically a flipped version of that. You've still got Route twenty-nine down here on the left. Hillsdale back there. So this is looking from the southwest to the northeast. And really, the purpose of this work session today is to discuss these two questions. Given the density that is proposed by the applicant, would that be generally acceptable even though it exceeds the master plan's recommendations? And finally, the building height proposed, which is five stories, would that be generally acceptable considering the limitations that the master plan recommends based on the land use classifications? That concludes my presentation. I don't know if we should do discussion now or let the applicant get up.
App can talk, but I had a quick question. Was just the age of the master plan that recommends the twenty units per acre?
Yes, the Places twenty-nine master plan was adopted, I believe, in June of two thousand and ten. It was definitely two thousand and ten, but not for certain a month.
Okay, that's all I had. Anyone else have any quick questions for staff? Will we hear from the applicant? So I'm turning it over to the applicants. As long as you're representing the applicants or.
Yeah.
I know it's not a formal hearing, so.
Sit or stand. I'm happy to just sit. Whatever you say. Eye level as you all. Do you have a preference? Is that okay? This is more informal, so. Well, I'll just introduce myself for the record. I'm Valerie Long with Williams Mullen, representing the applicant. My colleague Megan Madgostup, who most of you know. And this is David Ds with Thesis Living. His company is the contract purchaser of this property. And first, Cameron, thank you. He covered most of the issues. When David and his colleagues came to us with this property, they're very interested in investing in the county and helping to address the shortage of housing, multifamily housing in particular. They identified this property. Sort of shared with us what their vision is. Thank you. And from an urban planning perspective, we think it makes so much sense. They think it makes sense from a market perspective. Really, the big issue is the density issue. And so when we first looked at it, our initial thought was that's about twice what the comprehensive plan contemplates here. But this makes so much sense for this parcel. It's the, as you may have noticed, the on the city-county border. The city's comprehensive plan, which was just adopted last fall. The parcel to the south and those several to the south have a designation that contemplates up to ten stories along major corridors. And they haven't gotten into density levels in their comprehensive plan, but there's speculation, at least signals from their drafts, that it'll probably be higher density on their side as well, maybe no limits on density. Anyway, from our perspective, we think that's another reason why it's a wonderful opportunity for the county to about how this property could be most efficiently used and address the shortage of housing and then maybe the density limits. We think it's really the only sort of challenging aspect, given the, as you know, Mr. Hardcock, the twelve-year-old, maybe almost thirteen-year-old master plan. I know that since that was adopted, there's been a lot of change and realization in terms of, you know, density limits, you know, how the built environment is done. The places or the Rio twenty-nine plan, just just up the street, obviously, the character of that plan calling for much higher density, much more urban compact development. We looked at that closely and see a lot of similarities here. It's obviously not within that small area plan, but we think there's a lot of potential benefits. Obviously, right on a bus line, it's convenient. There's walking sidewalks and trails and all of those things. So I'll maybe walk through this. Feel free to stop me at any time. All right, it probably does not connect from there, from that far away. Do you mind if I just? Yep, you can cue me. That's just fine. Great, thank you. We included this slide just to visually demonstrate again that the, that it is right on the is that boundary of the city, everything to the south on the east side of twenty-nine is in the city of Charlottesville. And then everything on the other sides is the county. Next slide. Again, I imagine you all are familiar with it. As Cameron indicated, you all know it. That's the old Comdile Building, now Seminole Place, property across the street. Sort of backs up almost to Hillsdale Drive. Next slide. And Cameron already went through the comp plan designation with you. We're happy to chat more about it. One thing we we also think is relevant and helpful is that with regard to the uses and the comprehensive plan, we think it's an exact match. It contemplates urban density residential and then some type of neighborhood service center level mixed use. And as indicated, the concept plan is for a retail component in the front. So we think in terms of usage, it's a perfect match. That's okay. Next slide is good. Again, this is all part of our proposal. And I should back up and say, when we were looking at this, and as I indicated, we noted that the fully acknowledge the density that would, that's proposed is more than the current comprehensive plan contemplates. That's why we wanted to come to you and have a work session. We, we think there's a lot of merit. I hope you might agree. As we talked through it, you wanted to at least get your temperature and feedback on whether this is something that you as a commission would even entertain before we went to the expense and time of preparing a full application and waiting months to get to the commission, only to find out that it's sort of done on the way. So, thank you. Could you go back one slide? Thank you. Five-story building, non-residential, retail in the front. Parks of eighteen hundred and seventy-five units, the structured parking deck, and I can walk you through that a little bit more. Standard modern amenities for a multifamily project like this. We are proposing saving room for a multi-use path along Route twenty-nine frontage, which is also contemplated in the Places twenty-nine master plan. We have a pedestrian and vehicular connection proposed to Hillsdale Drive, which I'll walk you through in a minute. And then a small plaza area adjacent to the retail commercial space as part of the concept. So I don't know if this works as a laser print or not, but I'll just talk through it. And again, Cameron covered most of it. The area in the sort of red up closest to twenty-nine is a proposed retail component. And it's probably tough to see, but there is the walking or shared use path shown there also with the grass strip between the path and twenty-nine. The parking deck is gray in the center. You would enter the site one of two ways. See if the next slide is a little closer up. There we go. You'd enter the site at the bottom left is one way in. That's a in-only, not an out or not an exit. So if you were, for instance, coming to pick someone up who lived here or drop someone off, come in, go down, drop off or pick up at the circle, then come back out and exit through the parking garage. That's, you can hopefully see. And then there's a right out. Right in, right out at the northern edge that would also coordinate with the future Wawa gas station that's proposed on the parcel immediately to the north. And you can see that interconnection. We're also proposing a walking trail along the entire southern boundary of the parcel that would run from twenty-nine all the way to the back of the parcel. My next slide shows that a little better. This is just showing the various floors of the building, how it could lay out. That's more residential and you can see the parking deck in between, as Cameron showed you that. This is just a rendering showing conceptually how it would lay out with regard to the adjacent uses and actually the future Wawa site has been sort of drawn in to show what that would look like. You can see in the back, behind the building, sort of the top left. That's a future parking lot with, and it would provide a vehicular and pedestrian interparcel connection to Hillsdale Drive. You'll may remember several months ago when we brought the Virginia Institute of Autism special use permit there, that back, what is now currently a vacant lot, that would be a potential future overflow parking for them or additional parking for when they build out their second phase of their expansion. So we were able to work with their plans and incorporate an interparcel connection that still allows them to have enough parking spaces. So we think it works really well and provides for future redevelopment if needed. Again, this is just from the other side and as you can tell, or maybe see in the bottom kind of center corner where the, where the red meets the orange, there is, you can see the vehicular tunnel, almost a corridor where you drive through that parking deck to reach the opposite northern edge of the parcel and then be able to proceed north on twenty-nine or into the Wawa. Again, looking at with regard to the issue of consistency of the comprehensive plan, we would ask that you consider that while certainly the master plan and density recommendations are important and those are when we talk about consistent with the comprehensive plan, that's what we talk about all the time. But really, as you all know, there are many components of the comprehensive plan. And we like, I guess we would say ask that you consider all of the other components of the comprehensive plan that are relevant to this application, really all applications at the same time, that the issue of density is just one of many recommendations or guiding principles in the comprehensive plan. As I noted, that use is exactly consistent with the plan's recommendations. When we walked through and analyzed it internally against neighborhood model principles, it needs all of those, at least based on our concept plan. There's also the growth management section of your comprehensive plan that talks about encouraging approval of new development proposals in the development area at the designated location and with mixed mixture of uses. That's obviously a relevant component of, next slide, I keep forgetting that. Well, it seems to work about thirty percent of the time. I want to keep pushing it. Also, in the development areas section of the comprehensive plan, there are a number of other objectives that we think are very relevant to this proposal and support this proposal in terms of consistency. They're obviously there, but you know, provide sidewalks and pedestrian paths in the development areas, promote redevelopment, which this obviously is. Take advantage of existing investment in development areas, such as the infrastructure that exists on twenty-nine. Use the development area land efficiently to prevent premature expansion into development areas. This would certainly achieve that objective. Promote density within the dense, in the development areas and help create new compact urban places. We think it satisfies that goal as well. And then promoting infill and redevelopment that's compatible with the surrounding neighborhood and uses. As Cameron indicated, there's a variety of uses surrounding it. There are no single-family residential uses immediately adjacent. The furthest one, I think, would be far side of where Virginia Institute of Autism is in the Brook Mill community. Or maybe the Branchlands community, but this certainly won't have an adverse impact on those neighbors. The parcel to the south that's in the city, which is currently the Chinese food restaurant. Seems to be pretty successful from a restaurant perspective, but there's a lot of extra parking there. Presumably, that parcel would potentially be redeveloped in the future. The Wawa is being redeveloped. Virginia's autism, obviously going to into the east, hopefully, or their expansion. So we think it works well with all of the adjacent uses with the Seminole Place property across the street, which again, the old Comdile for those of us who are around that long. Now, as you may know, it's mostly a mixture of, I think, warehouse uses. I know, I think the school center one is there. There's a brewery there. You obviously have Stonefield just on the block. So we think it fits really well and can be a very desirable location for at least like this. And so we would. We have a couple more quick slides, maybe. We want to find advancing. Oh, yeah. Sorry, forgive me that perhaps one of them is important, that housing album we're all talking about. The, from the comprehensive plan about the shortage of supply of housing and the need to have diverse housing for current and future residents. And it's about encouraging a variety of housing types. And also, there's a provision that talks about exactly what the need is, that the county is projected to grow twenty-five percent in the next twenty years and needing twenty-seven hundred additional units to accommodate that increase. So obviously, that's an important component as well. I think that may be the end. Yes. We're obviously happy to answer any questions or address any comments you may have. Thank you.
Sure. Well, if we could, let's try to start with questions before we get into the comments on what we think of this proposal. I know I wrote down some questions. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Those questions. Brad, you want to go?
Sure. Just a couple of quick questions. Thanks for the presentation. It's really helpful. So you mentioned where the red meets the orange and there was the, you know, the entrance to the garage. It looks like there's a step back also shown there along the road. Is that accurate?
I think there was. Would you mind putting the slides back up? Let me pull my. It would be helpful to just keep those up. Going back and forth.
I'm going to step back from Seminole Trail.
You know, from the, like, the retail spaces. Between a retail to the.
Yeah, I believe it's fifteen feet at length in order to provide room for the, room for the sidewalk and then room for landscaping, room for maybe plaza sort of sitting area or.
Exactly. I think you're talking about the building height step back.
Yeah, so the.
Here, the fact that the retail is what, one story and then the multifamily. Twenty-nine.
There is retail with double height.
Yes.
Then there's a white, looks like step back.
Yes.
Is that accurate? That's a step.
Yes. And some of that was to sort of reflect the different recommendations in the comprehensive plan about a building height for the neighborhood services designated portion of the parcel compared to the urban density residential.
Got it. Okay, thanks. And related to the retail, I don't want to call it gratuitous retail. I realize that, you know, sometimes it's sort of ground floor. It's it's adjacent to the main circulation pattern of the pedestrians. Is it retail that you're envisioning to support this development? Would it be retail for other developments as well? What's your kind of concept around the retail?
And it's requirement, right?
Well, not necessarily. We could do a different zoning, but.
I mean, it is, it is a retail corridor. So I think doing some retail does play into like context of, of the corridor itself. You know, we're, we're setting aside some parking and turn, turn the internal parking garage for, for these retailers, you know. I mean, I can't predict retailers are really. But, you know, I can't predict who's going to want to go here, but we kind of envisioned like, you know, like at Deli or something and try to set up some kind of, you know, like outdoor space right here for people to sort of congregate. I think it would be, you know, in a building this size, it does help have some internal retail. So your residents can go downstairs and grab a sandwich or coffee or something like that.
Got a captive audience.
Yeah, yeah. I think, you know, having everything trying to meet the wishes of, of you all and of some of the planners, of making everything interconnected. I think it does help that retailer, does help our building ultimately. And just having flow of people. I think it would be desirable space. Do we want to do seventy-five hundred square feet? You know, maybe, maybe, you know, maybe not, but.
Yeah, I guess the reason I ask is because we've probably all seen retail backfire, where you have this desire to bring life to the street. And in fact, you can't find anybody to fill the retail. So you just have a dead space at the front of your building.
Yeah, I have envisioned that on Route twenty-nine. I mean, I really, I, you know, we we wouldn't be proposing a mixed-use project here with this much retail if, if we didn't think if we didn't think we could fill it.
Sure.
You know.
You have Stonefield and surrounding.
Yeah, it's like, you know, Lululemon, Starbucks, you know, all of these, you know, REI, all these big box retailers.
Sure.
A lot of the small box, small shop retailers like to fill around, around those large groups. So I think it, it makes sense.
Great. Just a question about stormwater. How is stormwater being accommodated?
We're, we're assuming.
And then last question, Lonnie, and I'll be quiet. Your vision for affordability, the county policy, city county policy, you can talk through that.
Meeting from what I've been, from what I understand.
Okay, we've explained in our new.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Knowing there's a lot of uncertainty there.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, so just along with that, with the retail, have you considered flexibility in terms of that ground floor, in terms of if you the future ability to expand retail, if there is more demand for retail on that first floor? What's the adaptability of that, that first floor in terms of being able to change and adapt as demand changes?
You can always convert it to residential units. I don't, I don't foresee us wanting more retail here. It's just the city, the county, the US, really in general, wherever we go, these housing units doesn't necessarily more retail space or office space, those kinds of things. And we, frankly, seventy-five hundred square feet of retail, it's, it's a lot. I mean, it's not. If you had, if I, if I had a use that I could put on three and a quarter acres right now, then, of course, it's not a lot, right? Like, you know, I could I could do that easily. But if you're going to build a spec like, like we plan to do, it's it's a decent amount of retail. You know, we think it's attractive, but to answer your question, we can always convert it to apartments or office or kind of living space or something like that. I don't envision us wanting to create more until.
And just as a comment, in terms of your stormwater, those big flat buildings like that, a grave for green roofs. Now, extensive green roof on that, one, one way to.
Okay, yeah.
I have some questions. Does anyone else have any questions or get the comments? I'll just go then. Just some simple things. You talked about access through the parking lot in the back to Hillsdale Drive, but that's not your property, right? So do you have to work out some kind of ingress and egress agreements, easement?
Yes.
So that would, that would be to be, to be determined.
Right. Okay. In working with Virginia Institute of Autism and the owner of that parcel, we haven't worked out the details by any means, but that's been part of the plan forever, even before Thesis Living started looking at that parcel. Another developer who was looking to develop the same parcel was already talking to that owner of that parcel about interconnectivity. So.
We've also had discussions with the developer of a Wawa property. And and because we're trying to meet VDOT's recommendations with regards to limiting, currently we have, we have two in and out access points on Route twenty-nine. Of course, wanted to limit, limit the Wawa. I understand, I get it. But we're, we're, we're working with them to create, to just combine our, our in and out to the north of the, of the property. And they've been, you know, so far, very cooperative and great. But there's such two kinds of things that have to happen for we can kind of all hold hands this. But we're, we're all trying to work together. Those guys have been very cooperative, at least thus far. But yeah, we, we all have to in a sense, work together to make the fire marshal happy, make you not happy to provide marketable access to the asset.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, because just looking at the parking lot that goes to Hillsdale, it doesn't really feel like it's that conducive to go as a throughway. You know, you've got cars backing out, pulling in, and then you're trying to like sneak through it. And I've certainly done lots of sneaking through parking lots back there, but it, it can get, it can get hairy. And so I guess I'm just wondering if that parking lot needs to be designed in a different way. It hasn't been. Obviously, it hasn't been constructed.
It's not necessarily, at least, correct me if I'm wrong, intended to be sort of a, a. It's not necessarily, at least, correct me if I'm wrong, intended to be sort of a a regular. Interconnection for the very reasons you indicated, but at least an option. Certainly, I think, you know, if you really wanna get to Hillsdale and you don't wanna deal with that, you know, turning right out of the building and then right on Green Bart and then right. Just go so close, you could get there relatively easily. Um, the challenge with that site is there's a stormwater management facility in one corner, there's some steep slopes in other areas. It's kind of the only way the footprint works, at least part of the civil engineers that designed it, that. It both provides enough parking for the Virginia Institute of Autism's needs long term. And allows for vehicles to circulate through. It's not been, you know, it's just on paper at this point, of course, but.
Sure.
Yeah, it's not ideal, but um. We wanted to do the best that we could with the. Options.
Okay, and then types of units you're envisioning, are these one, two, and three bedrooms, mostly two bedrooms, one bedroom studios, do you?
It'd be mostly ones and twos, of a small amount of stu- studios, um. You know, like generally be markets and fresh ones, I would imagine, so um.
Yeah, I was, I was sort of seeing it that way, cause I didn't imagine there's like top lots on this property. This is not. Place that I don't, I don't really envision a lot of families wanting to live in this spot necessarily.
That's fair to say. I mean, yeah, I mean, maybe young families, but. Yeah, that two bedroom condo when I first had a child, it didn't last very long, so um. Yeah, and this will be complex, but that's just my personal experience. Um, but yeah, we will, we're considering mostly, you know, one. Um, one, one bed, one bedroom apartments and two bedrooms bath apartments, um, and some studios.
Okay, and then the parking deck itself, it kind of hearkens to Lonnie's question a little bit. Is that, is that top open to the sky? I can't tell, it looks solid.
Yes. Open to the sky.
Okay.
But it's wrapped on, on three side or three and a half sides, so it doesn't. You know, you're not driving down the street, you see like a massive concrete deck, you know, so it's, it's, it'll be uh aesthetically more pleased.
So I've been, I've seen some units like this in Florida where you're, you get out of the parking deck on the third floor and you open a door and you're in the hallway. Is that what you're thinking of?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, okay, so you don't. So that what you get in by the bottom and then you go on up and then you're, you can park on the floor where your unit is.
Um. We haven't gotten that far, but yeah, in some, in some instances, that's the case. It's not like there's gonna be. You know, sixty doors on, you know, on the.
No, I didn't mean that.
Your three access points and yeah.
Right, and then you get into some common area and then you can go down the hall to your.
Right, yeah.
Alright.
And most of the first floor would be for the retail, the parking, the first floor would be dedicated to the retail, at least that's kind of what we're planning for now. Um, and then essentially, for security reasons, you fob off the second through fifth floor. So that, you know, nobody can get into the apartment.
Okay.
Is it all for residents?
Is it two stories of retail then, or they're just tall?
It's just tall.
Okay, right, so. Alright.
Most retailers, it's like fourteen foot clear, fifteen foot clear, like tall ceilings.
Right, okay, well, those were my main questions. I may have comments, but does anyone else have any questions?
I had a follow-up to.
Yeah.
So, okay, so so that top lot, the top level is parking.
Yes.
You're not showing the spot, but you.
Not on top of the building, like on the roof. Is that, oh, there would be on.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, never. So that, so, so. I'm also assuming it's showing level with them. I understand this is a very. Eliminary massing, but right now it's showing level with the rest of the harbor complex.
Yeah, gen- generally, it would. You know, cause if you're, if you're in a parking garage, it's like this, right? So you're sort of swimming up, swimming down, and then on the top, it would, it would sit just below kind of the, the top of the building.
Building. Okay.
So, so it will be in general be lower. The highest point of your garage would be lower than than your roof carpet or.
Yes, yeah.
Having people getting access to. That roof and all the mechanical, I'm assuming that's gonna be full of mechanical systems. As much as I would echo my, my colleagues' point about, you know, green loo roofs and having something. Building of this size, that it would bring some. Um, you know, look at how we can. Build in a, in a sustainable way, uh, and particularly with the, you're gonna have issues with you, with your, with your uh both quality and quantity. Um, with stormwater, so. Anything you can do to show all your. Looking.
Okay.
Looking forward.
Yeah.
Forward thinking in terms of construction technology is.
Yeah.
And as it can be done.
I see our civil engineer was there today, but um. I, I, yeah, that's something we're thinking of. Right now, it's essentially. You know, a hundred percent. Um, impervious. It's like, it's all gravel and concrete, um, so, you know.
It doesn't seep through.
Right. Apologies for ignorance.
Okay.
Um, so, yeah, I mean, we, you know, we understand that we'll have to do some, um, some. Some underground potential. Um, and go work on some recommendations, um, requirements.
As you probably know, we're in the middle of the comprehensive, I don't even know if we're in the middle, we're in the first quarter or something. Anyway, we're not even in the middle. And then we're also gearing up or working on the rewriting the zoning ordinance. And as part of that, we may be looking at some incentives uh for green technologies, such as. It's been done in neighboring facilities to give density bonuses for, you know, putting on a green roof or using permeable. Pavers in parking spaces and things like that, so, you know, that, but we're not there yet, so we don't have these things to. Present to you as here are the ways that you could get additional density bonuses or do those kind of things. But I just want you to know that's kind of on our minds and some things that we're looking for. So we could just now transition into just making comments. We're kind of already starting to do that. I have comments, but I don't wanna start, so.
Just one other quick question. I assume that since it's five stories, it's gonna be stick built, basically. That's probably why you're avoiding high-rise.
Um, well, multiple reasons why.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, building anything larger than this would be. Some pretty big swing, uh, you know, in the county, uh, not that it won't, not that I don't think it would be successful, but there's a lot of different reasons why. One would shy away from that, um. Uh, yeah, but it would be stick-built, yeah, but sprinkle, sprinkler, you know, all those things, um. Most likely stick-built, you know, this five-story slab on grade, wrapping a concrete deck.
Totally got it.
Yeah.
And would you, um, would you envision this, maybe you can't answer this, but phasing this at all, or is this like a one and done kind of?
No, this, this would be one and done. Unless we bought the parcels next door, unless it was a rating success, you don't wanna do it again.
Yeah.
Consider that.
Yeah, okay, thanks.
Alright, so let's start with their, I mean, there, I, I think I have some design ideas, but um. Even those aside for the moment, wh- what are your thoughts about the, the height and the density proposed here? Lonnie?
I, I'm fine with it. I mean, I think it's, I think it meets our goals from the conference plan. Against the kind of the density that we're, we're looking for. Um, I, I like the idea of the. Internal parking garage that as opposed to.
Dare at this big bonky thing.
Yeah, you're not wasting all a bunch of space with parking lot, which drives me crazy. Um, and it is redevelopment, which we're really trying to encourage, so all those things I see as big places. Aggravability in my mind.
Okay, others on the density question.
I guess I would just add, um, a couple of things. One is. I appreciate that the time you took to look at this step back, step back from Route twenty-nine. I think for a number of reasons, Route twenty-nine already feels like if you're a pedestrian out there, you might as well throw yourself on a car.
I wasn't there on Sunday.
It's so uninviting and so cold, and. If you really wanna enliven the street edge, which I think, you know, it's inevitable and five stories is not like out of the question. It's not like we're looking at a ten-story building, you know, everything we talked about, the city and that current ordinance and so on, envisioning ten stories. It's not so much the height, it's how you feel along the corridors of pedestrian. Making sure that that's enlivened, that there's landscape, that there's, like you said, you know, maybe some retail that causes you to go out and have. A sandwich on the front patio and it's not just closed at five o'clock, so it's cold.
Yeah.
All those things.
I think, and, and all of those things also help our building, right?
Yeah.
You know, creating a little cafe where people can stop and have a glass of wine or whatever. A cup of coffee, you know, that makes our building more desirable, makes for the streetscape for, for Alamo County, Charlottesville better. Um. It's, it's a, yeah, it's a no-brainer, so, you know, and, and we, I think we've had a couple iterations back and forth with um the planners and. Um, and have given us notes on more landscaping, more landscaping. As a developer, you don't wanna plant a million trees, but.
Yep.
I get it, you know, and, and quite frankly, being next to a Wawa isn't exactly like the best thing in the world, right, but. Um, I, I do think it would serve us as well, and you know, and so we plan to landscape it great. You know, part of what we do is, is, is place making, right? You know, we're trying to create.
Right.
It's, you know, so, um, you're, that didn't mean to ram.
No, that's alright, so just following up on that, so sun angle relationships, you know, so if you're looking at. Five stories with a minimum step back, I don't know what the step back is, but it's probably ten or fifteen feet. Just, you know, the sun, the rising sun, which is east, I think is the top of the page, right? So it's gonna shade twenty-nine. It's not a lot of stories, like I said, but five stories will create shade, so. Just considering a sizable step back that makes a difference as opposed to just kind of.
Maybe it could be a little balconies for the.
Yeah. Yeah.
Julie, do you wanna comment on the density at this point? I know you always have a lot to say.
Well, I don't, I don't have a lot to say because you're saying it for me, so I'm, I'm really pleased. So I will just add a couple of things, so you know, I haven't gone for my little walk around there. To sort of see what the um, uh, the elevations. And even that, even at five stories, it's still gonna be small.
Right, across the street, there, there's a rise, and Comdale sits on top of that.
Sits on top of that, so it's, it's still gonna be small, so I, you know, I'm not gonna say I don't need to show it to you. I actually took a, a photo from, from the front of Comda.
Okay.
Over there and said, you know what? If this was me and I was in a fighting mood.
Which you never are.
But that you're not me. And your counselor's gonna tell you not to be in fighting. Um, I actually would try and go taller. Because there's nothing there. From the whole thing, there is absolutely nothing there. Sorry, Monticello, there's nothing there. And so, and so you actually will, and so I'm looking to, you know, we had this conversation yesterday, I'm looking down the road. I, uh, I imagine if the present uh. Person who's in charge of the post office remains in place, that our post office there is not gonna be there. Cause that piece of property, that piece of property is too valuable for us to go stand in line for our passports. And so. And so, we're gonna have from the new opportunity, and I get, you know, I get our, our. And I have to apologize to the owners of these places, cause the names don't mean anything to me. But I believe it's Seminole Square where the giant was, that's how I remember it, the giant shopping center.
Right, I know what you're talking about.
So the giant shopping center is going to have a several-story building there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we all hope, or at least I hope on our behalf, that the Fashion Square is going to have a several-story. Building there at some point in time.
Yeah.
I've given up on the other one because I've just given up on that, but I had given up on it when we were talking about it. So what I think we're doing with this project is helping to sort of establish. What the parameters for this part of twenty-nine might be.
Yeah.
And we do it on our turn. I would actually like to see it a little taller. And I would actually like to see some, some office buildings on the second floor there. Because I actually believe having to go up twenty-nine to go to the urgent care place or to go to the. We did a lot of vet buildings up there recently, the, the vet building stuff up there. That we really don't have what I would call sort of community office space in that location. You know, so I don't know if you needed to go to a vet, you go to Ivy, if you need to go see some other kind of thing, you go someplace else. And that's an excellent place for there to be the kind of. Of offices, small offices that, that you could go to, like a CPA or a lawyer. Or your environmental consultant, if you're an environmental consultant, or come back from Scottsville, so there's a whole bunch of stuff that could go. That could go right. I, I thought, can I say an architect's office? Yeah, exactly, yeah, I think that would be. I thought this, but, but I think we're, so that we have an opportunity to send a signal. If in fact, we wanna see that part of twenty-nine redeveloped, to sort of be ten years from, from ten years, fifteen years down the road. There's my other last piece, and I'll be quiet here. Staff has told us that we were about fifty-five percent below density whenever anything comes from somewhere. So when they give us our, 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 our density um report. There's a piece of me now that's gonna be starting to talk about this thing about. That we're gonna have to do dev zone density. So we're. Dev zone, that's, oh, got it, okay, so DVD. Which is the whole idea in my mind, and so my mind is how do we recapture?
The density we didn't get.
That we didn't.
Right, okay, yeah.
Cause once it's gone, we can't get it back.
Right.
Unless we buy.
Redevelop another thirty years.
Right, exactly, and so this whole idea of, that's, that I've been playing with my head is like. Are there places that it's not obnoxious, or noxious, not obnoxious, obnoxious. That's not obnoxious, to think that there might be an opportunity for a higher density. And when I was standing at Comda, looking down, looking, looking right, looking left, I said, you know what? I didn't get it on the John Warner Parkway, where I really wanted to call it. Instead of getting garden apartments over there. Um, but this would be a place where it would be hard for us to say. A little bit more density when you get, so. I'm not saying you should do this. This is just me musing in a work session, that's, I'm deciding to be clear about that. But that's what I'm, I'm thinking about, since you're never gonna be able to capture that fifty percent, you know, how do we do it? So that's me, but I don't have a problem with density. If that's a pool over there, did I see a square pool outside? You might as well right now put lily pads in there and put cactails in there because the geese will be looking.
They just need a couple sheep dogs. Alright, go ahead.
There are a lot of geese in that area, for sure. So, I mean, I, I will echo a hundred percent, but, you know, we have certain sites that lend themselves. I think this is definitely one of them, and. When you do that, obviously financially, there's some incentives, I mean, there's, if you go higher, obviously there's, there's some costs. But I think here, I think here you can be bold. I would personally also echo the, so one thing is retail, but the other is commercial. And perhaps that entire block wants to be a combination of retail and commercial, the ones that spaces. Twenty-nine, and then think of that with a larger residential component to it. And if this is done well, it can serve as a model of what we can do in the rest of the county. Uh, some people fear the density, I think if it's done well, you could, and, and this is where, you know, that there, uh, we would challenge you to do that. Make this the model project so that others can see that we can have high density in areas that we need it, which will help us. With other areas that we wanna preserve, or if you do get those higher densities, and it also helps with infrastructure, we have infrastructure here. And so, so. Yeah, I, I, yeah, my only problem with the density is I don't think it's enough for, for this area.
Okay, and so I'll just wrap this topic, and then we can talk about elements of the building itself, um, but. I completely agree. I looked at your height and I thought, why not six? And I understand that there's other things that come into place, not about seven. I mean, I honestly look at. What's going on around it, and to your point, you know, like, I'm not worried about offending the post office or that the postal. Truck drivers would have a nice view next door. I really think that because of what's all around it, you're not towering over somebody's single-family bungalow.
Right.
We don't have any of those issues, Comda is at a raised elevation across the street, so the height isn't going to really even feel that out of whack when you think about roof lines. But it, I, I do, I do really like this notion of considering perhaps some office or commercial on this, you know. The, the stores above the retail, we can think about, you know, renting out those units. And you're like, sorry, you're the last one to the rental office, and you get the view of Route twenty-nine. You know, might that, but, but for an office person, you know, it's like, yay, I'm right above the coffee shop. Uh, there's a, there's a real dearth of, of spaces for smaller firms. And a high, high demand for that, and a lot of firms can't afford, or for various reasons due to parking and other things, don't wanna be on the downtown mall. You know, and the downtown malls might have that much to, to offer, so I, I think he. I I think you you might think about that as a way to have like office. On the front and then the retail underneath it, and that's kind of your work. Part of the building and then the back is more of the residential where you can not necessarily look at cars whizzing by. In in terms of. The site itself, I mean, I, when I saw that flat top that I thought maybe was a roofed parking garage. I wondered whether or not you could put a green roof on top of that. But if you went up another story or two, there are some award winning designs of people who have had interior parking garages. You may have seen these pictures, guys, periodically, I just sound very long, random, low impact development things that I like and say like, share these with all your clients. But, you know, not cursing a proper, just randomly, uh but honestly, you know, those apartments that are interior then. Can have windows looking down on a courtyard space. That becomes a huge amenity. I know some builders of of apartment buildings in Kansas and Jersey City, New Jersey, where there's very little green space. Where they have made green rooftops activated spaces, so it becomes a huge amenity. They, you know, they rent those places like crazy. And it's worth the cost to them. Um, the green roof tends to last costs two to three times more than conventional, but it also lasts. Three times longer, so it's kind of a knickknacks. You're gonna have it open, you're thinking, well, I wasn't gonna have a roof anyway. But it, you know, it's there are ways that you could do something with that space because you're trying to create this sort of internal courtyard. Where that turnaround spaces, you have this sort of amenity zone, which I'm not sure what that is, maybe it's like gym space or. Community space for people to have a party in there, I, you know.
Light blue area would be, you know, like our. You know, again, this, this is very conceptual, but uh that is the sort of. Low hanging fruit for amenity space lobby, um, you know. We would have a a a keystone pool. You know, volleyball. Right, like all those things right there, um, you know, but you know what?
But I, one thing that always kills me about this whole region is the fact that we have all these gorgeous views. And then if you really look at who has the best views, it's like car lots on Pan Tops. If you were a car, you have a fantastic view. Yeah, the the people in jail, probably can't see out because the weather's probably way up there. I've never been in the jail.
How would you know?
Not so far, not so far, but honestly, you know, what what an amazing view you have from up there. I mean, why wouldn't you do something with your rooftop?
You did, you know. A lot of my background is multifamily in downtown Chicago and roof decks are kind of like rebuilding a brand new building.
Yeah, I grew up in DC and a lot of the buildings of neighborhoods I lived in now have. Rooftop bars, rooftop, you know, and again, because you're. If people are up on the rooftop going whoopee, you know, who cares? Again, they're looking down on postal trucks. But hopefully they're looking off into the distance and they're seeing beautiful views. Sunsets, I mean, just to be able, like, you're in this really urban space. Idea that you could go up the elevator and be outside. On a beautiful day like today, that space would be really enlivened, more so than down in the courtyard because. I don't, I'm not sure if the courtyard is big enough to, if like I was living, I've lived in courtyard apartments, but they're really big courtyards, very park-like. I'm not sure that space is big enough to give that feeling. You know, so other spaces that you could go and kind of feel open and feel free. I know that I I like that you have the pathway going down towards the park. You know, way across, you have to cross, you know, Hillsdale Drive and all that stuff, but. You know, that's kind of far. Wouldn't it be neat if you just brought the elevator up? So, anyway.
One thing to add on to what you're saying is just, it's a little bit of the height issue and. Completely support what everyone's saying, the view from southbound traffic on twenty nine. Of that northern edge of the building, especially where the parking garage looks like it's it's exposed in there. Just think about ARV, you know, the view shed, what that's gonna need to look like, and if there are potentially ways you can even wrap that or.
Or you could face it with a different material. You look at downtown Stanton, they put up, they snuck in a parking garages where. It just looks like another billion, oh, that's a parking garage.
It's gonna be an expensive edge of your parking garage.
Yeah, it doesn't help us to build a print, like, you know, like, you know, an exposed concrete block. Even if it's just facing the Wawa, it's not gonna. Our marketability, we're not gonna build one beautiful side and then the other side.
I I will, if I I will share that, just so that we're aware. That there are a number of six-story structures in Stonefield. The hotels are six-story structure. The other one, the one, the the last one that they built is a six-story structure. And there's the forest, the old, the the old apartment. It's it's four stories. And so this really isn't out of, if it were a little bit higher. This is not setting some new, breaking some new boundaries in that in that area.
No, and I think that's useful when you do your presentation for real. That you show, you know, these are, you know, a larger zoom out, these are the other buildings that people may not. Well, the top of their head realize are just as tall.
The stuff that was originally proposed to be a much better project.
Yeah, with buildings on top, on top of the stores, yeah, living on top.
And then two thousand eight came along.
I'm so glad you mentioned that because the, there's a multi-family building that's under construction adjacent hydraulic. The board granted an exception, so it could be, I think, eight floors on one side or. Looks like eight floors on one side, something, that'll be nice and tall. Then there's another one that's actually also proposed, but not under construction yet. There will be at least seven floors.
So. It is, that's true. There's uh one of the structures in Stonefield, it's just, I believe it's the one that's just north of. The movie theater. It's where they've got the con, you can see the. So when that building is finished, portions of it's 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 on a slope. So portions of it are gonna be six. There'll be a little bit, that is seven stories, and on one end it will be eight stories.
What, so where the where the parking lot used to be?
Yeah, so it looks like a prison right now.
But that density, I mean, going to those higher des- seven, eight stories. Think will allow you to create some some amenities, while also. Allow you to do something with the reportability of some of the units, so I I think those are the kind of things that density brings. And so we would encourage you to look at that.
Right, because your land costs are set, and obviously it does cost more money to build more. And we're not sitting here as your structural engineers either, but I I think that what we're also saying to you, I just don't want this to. I just want to state the obvious, but just put it for the record that. We don't want to just say, yay, yay, more density, and that's it. We really want you to. Do something innovative here. That's, but that's, you know, less polluting. Provides more opportunities for unique outdoor experiences, like I set up on the roof, whether it's a green roof or. Patio roof or what our accommodation. Um, there's lots of green roofs that have been designed around HVAC units and all that, so that that is not out of the question, but we. In order to do that, we don't yet have those policies in place, but we'd really like to challenge you to, so that we can say to the public. Yes, we let them do this way past what is in the master plan, as twelve result that didn't envision. Sort of a modern looking, forward-thinking design aesthetic for this corridor. But they gave us all these other wonderful green designs and. Uh, recreation thinking, different ways of getting outside. That made us really like this project versus just it was tall.
Yeah, and I, and what I'd add to that is just remembering to honor the street edge and the pedestrian scale on twenty nine. Because, you know, you can go high and it can completely lose the pedestrian uh scale. The other thing is stormwater management, um, university's done a great job with Brandon Avenue and with that Green Street, Brandon, where you actually have. Potentially area in front of the building or in those courtyards where you can do stormwater management.
You can actually do stormwater management in your tree wells. There are structured cells that you can, that will hold stormwater that you can actually run your utilities through. And and so you're getting your stormwater water quality credits. We know you can buy offsite water quality credits. But wouldn't it be nice if you actually treated some of the storm where you're generating onsite, not just through underground storage?
While you're talking about water, remember that the project also will sit on, sits on the edge of a fifty-five year and older. Set of communities. Two nursing homes. You could have an interesting set of clientele. So you could have uh someone who can just want to run a space that could be near their mom and dad. Or you could have someone who needs to put a care tape. So, so while I know you're talking about initially said by young professionals. That when you sit with your crew, look at that community there and see what's done, what's there. You've got a number of people, a number, you've got a good sized population in. That is significantly older than your sixty years old, that that could actually be a space that they could use for.
That we initially looked at the site, we consider uh nature restricted. Much more difficult. But uh, no, I I hear you, and that's honestly, that's my ears, because it just, it gives us a, we know that. The greater transport area, it's not just young professionals, you know, that who are gonna be living.
Some of us get old eventually.
You're looking at this block cheese, you know, it's not much, but it will be a beautiful space, you know, when when you have it fully designed and um. It'll be a phenomenal place to live, so uh we we know it's gonna draw from different page groups and uh serve different communities.
I know a number of people who've done just what you said, who have moved. To Florida and gotten a condo to be near their elderly parents who are in a care center. I know some people have done that.
Thing that's happening in in a, well, not in your work.
Other thoughts about this site?
Oh, do we really need six hundred, how many parking spaces are there? Gosh, I can't wait to. I I can't wait till we talk to that. And no Tesla chargers, none.
No Wawa XR.
Put regular chargers in for people who can't afford and never for other reasons buy a Tesla.
Well, that's the something, I don't know.
Oh, I saw that and said, good gracious.
Well, along those lines, I mean, is there bus stops? I don't know about bike riding around the city because it's still pretty congested, but. Yeah, that's true. Okay, what about, just one other thought I had real quick is crossing twenty nine. You know, to go, because there is, you know, there are a lot of amenities, you couldn't walk Stonefield from there, you couldn't.
You'll be able to, you'll be able to, because there's going to be an over twenty nine bridge between Stonefield. And um.
Zander Road.
And Zen Run, thank you.
And so you could walk down Hillsdale, through the back parking lot. And downhill Dale, and then up Zand.
So that's gonna give you all, that can get you everything.
So your walking trail that goes along the side and and. Then you showed it kind of goes through the parking lot. Is it possible that you could get an Eastman to make your walking trail? Not go through the parking lot to get to?
Yeah, I mean, once we start, you know, speaking with with them and.
This is kind of a downer, you're like walking around this nice little path, then then you have to walk through parking lot and grandma runs you over.
The intention is to extend it to Hillsdale, we're not, yeah, we don't wanna jump into, uh, you know, F one fifty, right, the corner, you know.
Sorry, yeah.
I think that that's.
Anything else on this site?
Thing I'll say is uh not related to the specific development, but uh, you know, when when I met with. Uh Valerie, uh, the applicant uh with this one, uh, and Megan, we're kind of talking about. The application package. Um, and we had a lot of discussions last night about applications. I think that this is a great example of what is kind of really important with the rezoning. Uh, showing building massings, we even got the relationship to adjacent buildings. Uh, showing diagrams as to what kind of uses are going in the building without getting into things like. The dimension of parking spaces and the dimensions of sidewalks and some of the stuff.
But also circulation patterns for vehicles, but also for people, and so. You know, that point that I just asked about, like, how will they get to Stonefield? And then you said, you could just include that, you know, like. People can, you know, because there was that issue of this is a name, supposed to be a neighborhood center, another center, whatever.
Right, so I just think this.
You could show that we we don't need to put all that on this site because it's really easy to walk across to where there's already all that stuff.
Oh, right.
Yeah, let's ask us to think about that as we think about our zoning ordinance update and what we want to see with applications, you know, is this the direction we want to go? My recommendation is, it is, it might not be perfect, but uh it's it's a very different goal we normally see. Uh, and I think it provides a lot of clarity to some of the questions we often have. Um, without diving into details that aren't really necessary. You know, for for this one, obviously, we're talking about more density, but one of the things that would be helpful that isn't here. Is having a section elevation that that shows the height, because a lot of times we are dealing with things that are, we are. Trying to be more sensitive with the height, depending on the surroundings. And in some cases, we just don't, we we don't know how high they are, and then we say, well, what's your floor to floor? What is that height? And say, well, it's probably this, or, so I think having something in writing. Uh, would be good to have that kind of section, of course, in this case, it's not about the sensitivity, but it's about. You know, even knowing, well, how high is, how high off off the street is that? Is that setback and so forth, and how deep is that setback? That's being proposed, I think all of that would be good.
I guess a piece that's missing is an actual elevation relationship to the street, building height, floor height type thing.
But you also could, you know, probably get the height of the Calm Down building across the street, just use as a reference.
Yeah, we can, we can definitely put that together. I mean, architects, WDG out of DC are super sophisticated. Generally, we do that most, this is a kind of more spread out site, so uh usually when you're. Those are, those that request that are more dense locations where you do have kind of towers around you.
I think we're only, we're only saying that because we need to see it, but. You know, we get from the community, some people are like, oh, no, tall buildings, you know, and some of the. Preference conversations around the form-based code and Ryer, people said like, no more than three stories, I know, so.
I think this is more common for staff and and they're trying to put together a package of 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 common. For most applications, yeah, I guess for yours right now, it's not as critical, but. For others, uh, it does come into play because we're being asked to. If for a special use or or a variance uh on a setback or something like that, we don't really have all the information at hand.
And so I I think a lot of the comments that you. Find finding ways to do something with that roof and create some. We can, they're calling green spaces, you know, on on there, that I think that that gives, you know. My concern with. Too much density on a on a parcel is that if you're just creating a whole lot of concrete and no amenities. But I think there's a huge opportunity here to provide, you know, housing space and amenities. And and that's what I think what we really like to see. Uh, just another comment too, as we get to other sites with. Or density, the other thing that concerns me, you know, as the SC goes up is emergency vehicle access. Uh, I don't think it's a concern here, it seems pretty obvious for a mere.
And then, well, you you know all of that. The board of supervisors and goes back to staff as it starts to move inside, inside. Review process, fire, fire and rescue, you can play an enormous role. I've sat in on. I said in a number of things where the fire engine, where the fire department actually said, we took a truck out to the site and we couldn't get it down.
Yeah, like they can't turn around.
Turn around? No, we couldn't turn around and we couldn't turn the truck around there. And the guy, well, okay, well, we'll go back and fix it, and it got fixed. And so, just to let you know, you you know the, um, you know the email, we sometimes, I forget if it's Vivian or it's Carolyn that said. That sends it, it's about site reviews. Look at the list of people who have to send comments back. And I will tell you, if you haven't, it'd be interesting for you to go to one. And I will tell you, if you haven't, it'd be interesting for you to go to one, although not having live anymore. But things will stop. If a particular person says, nah, this isn't lying with me, not me personally, but this isn't, this isn't meeting the 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 sort of the diagram of the. Uh, the reg- the regulations that we say have to be, but then the project just sort of stops until the per- until the applicant. Fixes what he or she needs to fix, and then it goes forward, so. Well, that's, it's good to know, I mean, I know that it's not true in the rural area, that we have people building houses that you could not get a fire truck. See, we don't give them up and. You you'd have to go out to the pond and put a, put a, and put a hose into the pond and go like this. If you put it out, that's, I mean, I'm glad that I'm glad this reviews occur, I think you hear the nightmare story about other communities, you know, so. Now, I can guarantee you, I've sat in a number, because I used to go to the, I used to go to the site reviews when particularly when it had something to do with. One of the projects that are on it, you know, it's something, listen to people say.
I'll hope for what it's worth. Now, thanks to, I assume staff's role in this, the fire marshal is included in pre application meetings. Having two pre app meetings with the fire chief. And this plan has evolved based on his comments and concerns and so. Um, already, so they try to flag those issues on the front end for that very reason, so. Nobody's in that horrible position of getting their zoning approved, but then not being able to get their site plan approved. Because the fire trucks don't get down.
That's right.
Just so everyone knows, usually with a rezoning like this, all the members that are on the site review committee for by rights, site plan or subdivision. They get sent copies of the CMA, so we. Try and catch those big issues so that we don't approve a legislative act that has. Situation with the site.
Come back to another thing that we're hopefully going to talk about, because one of the, the one I was telling Monty about. Was because it was approved in zero eight. And it's just being built now. It is just being built now. And so. The rules that were in zero eight.
Yeah.
Certainly aren't the rules that are today. And, you know, how long do we let, this isn't about you. How long do we let things sit fat up before they have to come back for some sort of reevaluation?
Yeah. Under new business at tonight.
But zoning, no, that's my zone, that's my homework too. I know, I I I do want to get back to that topic at some future point, you know, because I I know I've seen things in. In Charlesville where there are, there is a project in Charlesville that was a hundred years old. Oh, ouch. And they, and everyone's.
Possibly true, okay. So, while spreading more urban legends about underdosed cyclans. Uh, is there anything else that you all would like to ask of us at this juncture? I think we appreciate the opportunity to have this work session so that, like you said. We're not in some deferral situation or, you know, how far should you go with your expensive engineers and such?
I can't think of anything, but I'm not sure, is there anything else?
I greatly appreciate everyone's time, I mean, you know.
Incredibly helpful.
Ladders and, you know, everyone that's that's uh. That's, you guys, you know, allowed this to happen, it's uh, it's 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 super efficient, frankly, it's a, it's breath of fresh air and. You guys get it, so thank you.
Yeah, I think these work sessions should be required. Maybe a threshold.
For maybe for things that are more complicated, they're trying to do something really different, I think we'd be very.
Your time, you've given us enough information, maybe one exception in the section, but. Um, it's given us enough to really chew on and give you good feedback, so thank you.
Thank you. It it gives me a little comfort, Megan and I, when we look at it and think. Wow, this could really work. If if the commission and board are open to it, and so the fact that you all are willing to support the concept of it, it means.
For anyone in the public who might be listening to this recording later, we did not approve anything. We're merely discussing directions. Okay, so with that, I'm going to close this meeting, uh, the work session of the planning commission. And I'll see you again at six o'clock in auditorium.